Good evening, everybody. This is the City Council meeting of January 3rd, 2017. We'll start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom, Drew, Solomon, Doyle, Estes, Scott, Laurenti, Wright, Modric, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we'll have the invocation provided by Scott Wiley, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering, this time to do business of our community. We thank you for our community. We thank you, Father, that we are richly blessed as a community. And we pray, Father, for these proceedings, that they would bring glory to you, that they would be filled with wisdom. And we pray, Father, for each agenda item, that it will be handled with clarity and wisdom and grace, that there would be unity. We pray, Father, for the greater good and the greater perspective to always be kept in mind. And we pray, Father, that we would see each other's as persons and as fellow members and citizens of this fine place that you have allowed us to live. And we pray it in Christ's name. Amen.
Anyone have any changes to the agenda, or is there a motion to adopt?
I make a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Solomon and a second by Drew. All in favor of that, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now on to general public comment. A time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue which is not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We have one speaker request form from Mr. David Miller. You can approach the podium and identify yourself, and sir, you'll have three minutes for public comment.
All right. My name is David Miller. Address is 1324 Quincy Number Four here in the city. Appreciate your time. For obvious reasons, I'll streamline this. I'm spending a lot of time dealing with, in opposition to the state's proposal for a state park in Spearfish Canyon. I oversimplify. That's the aspect I'm looking at right now. Why would I bring it to you? Because the state's taken a message to local governments all over. I'll make this brief. The park itself, the concern I have is if you were at Roughlock Falls, you started upstream on Little Spearfish Creek, went all the way to Timman Campground, you'd travel about four and a half miles, primitive stream bottom, other than Forest Road 222, not much there. It's pretty much the way it was 50 years ago. That's the area of real concern here, because it's national forest land. In order for the state to do what they want, they've got to acquire that land. They haven't asked the Forest Service, they've told them. Nor have they asked the public. They are asking now because they're concerned, they're making some opposition. Why the fuss? It isn't as if the state has come in and threatened with a huge environmental impact. They haven't done that. The concern is a hard one to pin down. The different question is, why is it if you're in Lead, Deadwood, Spearfish, and the Northern Hills, and you ask a question, and often in Rapid City, what do you think about a park, and the reaction is almost negative before you give any facts at all? I don't have any major, you know, great figures. Who do I represent? Right now, myself, but that's not quite true. I've worked with and put a committee together down in Custer. I work with the Norbeck Society here. I do that because they're not people to go around suing the timber industry with lawsuits. They're a pretty level-headed bunch. I'm working with local individuals up in Spearfish because they're getting the word out. All right. But I ask the question, why the fuss? Beyond the impact, it's home. I grew up in that country, and so naturally I have ties there. I think some of you do, too. It's embedded in the culture. It's who we are. As far as answering it, I can make as good a case for the state as I can against it. But this one is a question of values, and question of values are settled by the people. I'll make this brief. They have not once, in the last year, not once, have they offered to hold a public meeting of a kind where citizens can say yes or no to that park. And I have been after them on that for the last several months. My correspondents had filled this table. They don't want to talk about that. I'm obviously oversimplifying. What I want to do, I'd like to see the end runaround public opinion stopped. I'm hoping that just by talking to people like you, you'll be aware. I'm not asking you to do anything. On the other hand, it'd be real nice, real nice, if you certainly didn't support that sort of thing until the people of the Black Hills have had a chance to speak up on it. I'm, you have my email, I've sent you a message. Glad to answer any questions anyone has, and I think I'll just leave it at that. There's a lot that could be said, and this is probably a good time to stop then. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. And now we're on to non-public hearing items, items one through 39. And we'll open public comment on items one through 38. I have a few speaker requests. First, from Carissa Steiger.
Could we get it to show up there? It's not going to. Okay. Some technical difficulties here, but I'm Carissa Steiger. I've obviously been here before and met you guys the first time. But we have some continuing concerns, and we've taken your guys' recommendations and gone back and looked at what we could do to come up with a proposal that could help us move forward and ease your guys' minds a little bit. And I wanted to take a few minutes to address some of the concerns that came up at the Public Works meeting. There was some great conversations that were had, and we appreciate the fact that you guys allowed the homeowners some opportunities to discuss along with you guys. We did want to bring forth the newest, I think everybody got the packet of, packet of stuff in front of you. Okay. There is a document with our individual plots on the front that do show that that is what we received. And I know there was a lot of confusion at the Public Works meeting on where we came up with a minor drainage easement, and it was flat-out given to us that way. And actually, we have a brand-new neighbor in our neighborhood that moved in actually Monday, I believe, and she was, she received the same exact plot that we received, even after our meetings with you guys, even after our conversations with the builders. It is still wrong, dated December 5th, 2016. And I can pass it around if you guys want to see it, but it still shows that it is a minor drainage easement on there. So I don't know where the problem is really falling, if it is on the builders, if it is on who it is, but we're just really confused on how this still is making a mark on our, on our group and on our neighborhood, and the people who are now new to our neighborhood that are still facing the same problems that we're looking at. We wanted to address the, I also put in the packet a picture of our yard, and that would be the, sorry, I'd show you guys all on the screen, but it's not working, but the picture of our yard, and you can see that it really isn't a huge giant ditch. It is literally our backyard. It's nothing that has a ton of water in it. It's not something that drops down with a lot of death. It is literally our backyards and our playgrounds, and our fences are not in any crazy shape to move around this easement. And I know that that was a big concern in what we were looking at and trying to show you guys what that actually looked like. And then the last thing that I have in your guys' packet is an email written from Vicki Fisher from the Public Works, or from the Planning and Zoning Department. And if you take a peek at the very bottom of the front page down here, it says, "The information you provided in the attachment is very helpful," and that was Kyle's recommendation at the beginning. "I don't believe that the city can grant an exception to allow an encroachment into a major drainage easement. Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, but reducing the width of the easement is certainly a viable option if the engineering data supports the reduction." So we're looking at that, and that was prior to submitting any applications, that was prior to making a statement, because we were going to their office in an attempt to try to solve this problem, and that was what they said. "We need to have the engineer take a look at it, and if he says it's okay, we can move forward with that." And I do believe that that's what, 100%, what we've done to move forward with this, and hope that you guys consider that and look at these pieces of information, because we're really not a group of neighbors just trying to cause problems with the city, obviously. We are, we full-heartedly believed that we were in the right here to do what we, to build our fences and put our playgrounds in and do all of those things, and then come to find out that in the original documents, it wasn't laid out that way. But that's where we're sitting right now, and I hope that you can take a peek at our proposal that Kyle has for us today and look at it with some open eyes today. Thank you.
Thank you. And now another speaker request from Danielle. Is it Schaefer?
I'm Danielle Schaefer. I'm also on Duckhorn Street. So I'm going to use some of my time to ask all of our neighbors to stand up, so you can see how much of us are here tonight. All of these guys are neighbors on the two streets that have come to show their support. So I just wanted to show that we are 100% trying to work with you guys. So you guys can sit, you don't stand the whole time. To start the presentation, okay, so this is an email that I sent you guys after the Public Works Committee. We met with Kyle, we met with Lisa, and we said, okay, what's next? What can we do? We took your recommendations to heart, and this is what we came up with. And I know Kyle's presentation will go further detail, but these are some of the main points that you guys came to us, and this is kind of our, in a sense, argument back, saying this is what we're trying to accommodate. The regulation, the criteria manual does not designate what an easement has to be. I know we talked a lot about water drainage, and there's been a lot of discussion about previous stories and things that have happened to other people in the 100-year flood. For this, what we're asking is to go back five feet instead of 10 feet, so it would be a total of 10 feet, not 20 feet. And so with this proposal, we would still have adequate drainage for the 100-year flood. Another big topic was maintenance. I wanted to really highlight the point that our covenant states that we will maintenance it all, to include the sludge maintenance. That is part of ours, and a lot of us feel that if we're covenant to abide by this, that needs to be held up, and it's a little bit of a double standard to say that the city will maintenance and we will maintenance. I feel like we already agreed to do that when we bought our houses. Next is the liability. I understand there's a lot of worry about what can happen 20 years, 30 years down the road. And by keeping the 10-foot easement, we would still have access, we'd still have to abide, and this would mean moving our fences, moving our encroachments back, so we would just have the five feet on each side, 10 feet total. This, Carissa showed that one, so I'll talk about this. This is a recent picture. I just wanted to give you guys an update. I know a lot of you came out to our neighborhood, and I thank you very much for being proactive and coming out. That means a lot to us. But this shows Duckhorn's on the left, Vine Cliff is on the right, and it shows kind of what Carissa was talking. It's literally two backyards. There's no ditch, there's no rock, there's no culvert, literally backyard to backyard. And I apologize, I know it snowed, so it didn't help with the clarity of the picture, but you can see that, you know, there's no difference in topography other than the backyards. So I just wanted to clarify, I know at the last meeting, it sounded like there was some confusion on that, so I wanted to make sure that was clear and answer any questions. Thank you for your time, and we do appreciate everything you guys have done.
Thank you. Now Kyle Trelore.
Hello, Kyle Trelore with KTM Design Solutions. I do have a presentation, too. I've got a lot of information, so I'm going to try to go through it as quick as I possibly can here. If there are any questions afterwards, I'd be more than happy to take them. And also, just as a side note, the back projector's not working, so I'm going to have to look at the screen to see what's going on here. Anyways, we did have a chance to get together after the last Public Works meeting with the homeowners, with Lisa, and kind of discuss what the next steps would be and possibly come up with another solution here. And so that's what I'll kind of start into. This is the development, this is the project area. As you can see, we have regional ponds. The project area is literally just the backyards of these folks' homes. There's no off-site drainage, there's no drainage from the streets. All's that you get is what falls onto the backyards and runs down their rear yards. This was a letter that I sent out just, just last week with kind of some highlighted bullet points, and I'm just going to run through those all real quick here. One, the city's design criteria manual requires that the easement be sized for the 100-year flow. That is, that is what we're proposing now. Two, the design runoff, the runoff is 17 cubic feet per second at the lowest downstream area. The swale can safely be reduced to 10 feet wide with no adverse impacts to the storm drainage. All fences and above-grade obstructions will be removed from within the proposed 10-foot wide easement. The property owners are obligated to perform all maintenance on the drainage swale, and the 20-foot wide drainage easement will remain at the rear of lots number 1, 2, and 29. Public Works comments on the denial of this letter are basically broken out into four bullet points. Number one, it can be further reduced down to easement maintenance. The 20-foot wide major drainage easement is required for maintenance purposes. Once again, per staff comments, when this, when the subdivision was being recorded, these were reiterated, the 100-year storm must be contained within a major drainage easement. Further, staff commented that they would not maintain this city drainage easement. They required that covenants be placed on this property for all maintenance of this easement, thereby relieving themselves of any obligation to perform this maintenance. That was a requirement of the plating of this subdivision, and was accomplished and reviewed by the city attorney and so on. You can see the Elks Crossings covenants clearly state that the homeowners are required to perform all maintenance, including your regular mowing and the removal of the accumulation of sediment, which would be basically the major maintenance that would be required on something like this. The city attorney and the staff reviewed this and agreed that this was an appropriate level of coverage for the city, as they would not provide maintenance to this easement. The second bullet point, no obstructions allowed in the major drainage easement. Homeowners have agreed that within the 10-foot, all major, all obstructions will be removed, period. No fences, no playgrounds, nothing. All obstructions will be removed. The proposal, as it stands in front of you, would be to leave a 10-foot wide drainage easement that runs down the rear of these yards. Fences would be moved to that 10-foot line, allowing unobstructed flow of any stormwater that falls back there. Once again, it's been sized for the 100-year flow, and as a matter of fact, as you progress upstream through the lots, you will have less and less flow as you get to the top, where it eventually reduces to zero flow. Therefore, leaving plenty of room for unobstructed flow and inspection of the easement, as the owners are still required to perform all the maintenance. Alternatives, we did come up with several alternatives at the very beginning of this, and as we've moved through this process, the homeowners have been great, city staff has been great, city council has been great, and we feel like we've addressed a lot of the concerns and come to some reasonable conclusions here, or some ideas to really get a resolution on this case. So I thank you guys for your time. If you have any more questions, I'd be more than happy to come up and answer those questions. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll close the public comment period on these items. We'll go on to the consent items, items one through 38. Would the council like to pull any of the items off the consent calendar?
11, 12, 13, and once again, they could all go together.
I'm sorry, one more time?
11, 12, and 13, and they're all about bridge improvement grants, so they could all go
Okay, seeing no other items, can we have a motion to approve the consent? Okay, we have a motion by Estes and a second by Laurenti to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of 11, 12, 13, 30, 31, and 32. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Onto item number 11. Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for Campbell Street Box Culvert Outlet Repair.
I wanted all three of those to be taken together.
Okay, and item 12 is very similar. Authorize mayor and finance officer to sign Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for the 12th Street Bridge Repair. And 13, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign the Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement with South Dakota DOT for Cherry Avenue Bridge Repair Project. Okay, so 11 and 12 and 13.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Move to approve?
Second.
Like to retain the floor?
Okay, we have a second by Solomon, and you've got the floor.
I have a question for our finance officer.
Okay.
As I was looking at these three grants, we are responsible for 20% of each of the figures if we're given the money for each of these three projects. That is about $118,000. Do we have that money that is allocated for those if those grants come through?
I will actually defer that to Public Works Director Dale Tech. We don't get specific project detail when we go through the budget process. They would know if they budgeted for it.
Okay, thank you. Dale?
Yes, there's money available in the capital improvement plan for Street Strange Miscellaneous. Every year, we budget money in that fund for bridge repair, and with this additional 80% in funding allowed by the state, that'll really extend our local dollars in getting good infrastructure work done on these bridges.
Well, certainly, I can see the value-added aspect of getting the grants, so I certainly approve of that. I just wanted to make sure before we went forward, we had the money allocated. Thank you very much. I yield.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of these items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to items 30, 31, and 32. They're all very similar. Item 30 is to uphold staff's decision to deny a request by Carissa Steiger for vacation of easement. 31, to uphold staff's decision to deny a request by Carissa Steiger for Cora Jo and Elton Barber for a vacation of easement. And 32, uphold staff's decision to deny request by Carissa Steiger for Craig and Stacy Worley for a vacation of easement, and with various properties on Vine Cliff Drive and Duckhorn Street. So we'll go to Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to use this opportunity to say thank you to Duckhorn and Vine Cliff and so many others out there that are part of neighborhoods, and it's a really cool process to watch when something has gone a bit awry, and they come together, they come to the city, they search for answers, suggestions, they bring back forward to the council and the committees everything that comes to them that they're being asked for. And it started with the process of putting together an application. There was a few things that they needed to do with their I's and T's, and when that got completed, then it was recommended that they have an engineer take a look at it and see if this is something that could proceed forward to Public Works and City Council. They did that with KTM and with Kyle, and now before us, another request that we'd had was to have a registered professional engineer also document that this area could support a compromise, could support something that would bring both the city and an entire neighborhood, an entire developing neighborhood, together. And that also came before us, and we now have that from December 28th, documented by our professional engineer on behalf of the neighborhood to us. So it's been quite a process, I know for them. It takes time, but I think it's also allowed the time for the city council and the departments to really look at and review and maybe see where things can happen that could be no fault of a resident, but, you know, where does the fault come from? The beautiful thing here again is that we've got a recommendation that we can meet with. It certainly takes the city off of the hook with a compromise of a 10-foot, that is 10-foot, center would be five and five. It allows those fences to come back and yet not put an entire neighborhood into financial distress, whereas removing of fences and anything else that would be there would have been an extreme financial distress for, for many, many people in this room and those that couldn't come. So with that compromise stating that it would work, 100-year runoff, I had a quote as I was doing some of my research, that if we have a 100-year flood, we're going to have a lot more problems than Duckhorn and Vine Cliff. So that is the truth, but this still meets the regulations and the obligations and the swale in order to take care of itself. As far as the drainage and the maintenance, there's been some neighborhoods around the area that actually have some other drainage issues, and the city doesn't come out and clean those. It's the responsibility of the neighborhood. This neighborhood has it in their documentation, and they will be responsible, and we have the opportunity of making sure that their documents show that they are responsible for it. They've even provided that for us. So I don't even, I don't even think we have to rewrite that, because it's already in there, that they're responsible for that part. So they've done their part, now it's up to us to our part, and to meet this neighborhood in the middle and resolve this with a really decent compromise, and one that would certainly ring in the new year. And that's all I have to say for now.
Jerry Wright.
I'd like to make a motion that instead of denying, that we do deny the staff's decision to deny the request, in its place, we adopted amended easement of 10-foot versus 20 based upon the document dated December 28, 2016, provided by Greg D. Barbo.
Second.
Thank you. And may I continue?
Yes, we have a second to that motion by John Roberts, and you have the floor.
Thank you. To clarify, that the issue is that the certified certification does state that this 10-foot easement will provide for a 100-year flood, which is what is the requirement set forth in the design criteria, and that the condition is also that all fences and all above-grade obstruction will be removed from within the proposed 10 feet, and any future encroachments are prohibited. The property owners are obligated to perform all maintenance of the drainage swale, the exception being that the 20-foot drainage easement will remain in the rear of lots 1, 2, and 29 to accommodate the drainage swale of the storm inlet and the buried storm pipe. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'd like to ask Mr. Tech a question on this, if I may, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Tech, as you heard, one of the speakers on this item say that somebody who recently bought one of the homes in the lot, of course, is still receiving this minor easement description in some of the paperwork. Do we know where that disconnect is? I mean, is that something that the city is supposed to ensure? Is it the title company? Can you, do you have any insight to that?
That would be the responsibility of the title company to do a thorough title search of all documents. search of all documents recorded at the courthouse. And I know for a fact that there's a recorded drainage easement that preceded the plating of all these lots. As part of the title work, I would assume that there is reference to the book and page of this major drainage easement that exists on all these lots. What was handed out tonight just shows a mortgage survey. And if you read the certification on the survey, they're not certifying anything more than there's a house located on this lot, and that's it. It's not the official survey for the major drainage easement. And I believe that that should be contained in all the title policies of the property owners out there.
And I'm going to ask you a question, and if you don't, I mean, I don't know that you know, so I'm going to ask anyway. But how does this get fixed? How does this get fixed so that these homeowners or future homeowners in the next ten, fifteen, and twenty years get the right description? I mean, is, can you give me some insight to that? Is that something that the city would take up?
I don't know that there is a fix that the city can effectuate. The appropriate paperwork is recorded at the County Register of Deeds. So, any encumbrances, any easements, anything of that nature on your property or anybody's property in Pennington County is recorded at the Register of Deeds. It's beyond the scope of the city or city staff or the elected officials to have to notify individual property owners of their encumbrances on their properties. That's, that's the incumbent upon the property owner to know what things exist on their properties.
Thank you very much. Yield.
Red Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm probably not going to say, I said most of what I had to say at Public Works, but yeah, this, in my mind, this, this surveyor, the guy that did the mortgage survey didn't, just didn't flat do his homework. You know, he was cracking this out, and normal lots have eight-foot-wide setbacks, and that's just what he drew. So, just, you know, this is a major deal for these people, a three-hundred-some-thousand-dollar purchase or whatever. We'd gotten emails that how much each, you know, they've all spent on these homes. But, but it does require just a little bit of due diligence. And I was able to go down to the courthouse, and here's, I mean, it's public record, the plat's filed. It shows a twenty-foot, there's a dimension, twenty-foot, arrow goes to a major drainage easement, and then it refers to a major drainage easement document. And the document, I mean, it's all public record. And then the covenants are referred also in that same thing. And if you would like, I would read, you know, we talk about, this is one of the things that I mentioned the last time, is, is that easements go on in perpetuity. Covenants don't necessarily. Covenants can be changed. They can come and go. They do have a, an automatic renewal of the covenants after twenty years, a ten-year automatic renewal of the covenants. But upon seventy-five percent of the vote of the people, the covenants can change. So, it's not, you know, I don't think they'd be, I'm not suggesting that they would say, well, let's not take care of our property, but, but they are subject to change. You know, easements are, and that's, we have to, we have to place these precautions, you know, for people when we're dead and gone, you know. By the time, there won't be a problem in the next five to ten years, probably. It'll be forty years when I'm dead, you know. And these houses have probably changed hands three times, you know. So, I get it. I understand why they're sad. We didn't, or mad or upset, but we didn't take anything away from them. This easement was in place before these people were ever involved in the chain of title. So, I'll yield.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I would like some clarity on, and I don't know if this would need to go to the city attorney or Dale Tech perhaps, but according to, I mean, our city attorney's office has told us this is not in the city's best interest. So, while this group of property owners wants to see this happen, and it's the feeling, general feeling, that it's in their best interest, it's not in the best interest of all of the taxpayers of Rapid City. And the reason I say that is similar to the Elm Avenue warp that we dealt with just recently. That was something that city councils years ago, years ago, twelve years ago, took action on something that seemed to make sense. It seemed to be a decent compromise. And the story goes, there was a subdivision that was being built, and Elm Avenue needed to extend, and that property owner or the developer that was building these homes needed to put in that infrastructure, but none of those homes would access off of that street. So, it didn't make sense. Well, if we're not going to access our homes off that street, why would the developer need to do that? So, warp was granted, waiver of right to protest, and it rolled it down many years into the future when now the taxpayers are picking up the hook to the tune of over half a million dollars for that because the developer got away with not doing it. So, that, that's part of the, that's part of my concern, that something would happen. But the big question I have that if Joel or Dale could address is that we've seen something up here now that says entirely, this is the property owner's responsibility, that there is, that the city is not going to maintain this. And that's where my point of confusion comes in. Because if it, if it falls to this is a covenant issue, then it's not even within our purview. So, if somebody could get me, give me some clarity on that, I would really appreciate it. Why, you know, all of our advice from the city is saying no, because we're going to get in there and maintain it, but documents from the homeowners are saying otherwise. So, to me, that's a pretty major discrepancy.
You know, first I would say, if you're trying to harmonize the, the covenants that the developer drafted and that, yeah, we certainly reviewed and, and we generally view as part of the subdivision process, and harmonize that with the easement, I doubt there was serious discussion or really any thought given to making sure the easements were consistent with the, there were two separate processes. There wasn't, they weren't designed together or designed to function together. There were covenants. They said, you'll maintain that. My guess is the intent was to make sure people mowed it because we certainly had some drainage in the rear of houses where some people mow it all the way to the property line over the easement, and other people are just like, well, that's a drainage. I'm not going to maintain it. Even in situations where we have some, instead of easements, we have drainage lots, where the developer was allowed to plow off a drainage lot and nobody technically owns it, some of the adjacent landowners maintain that and some don't. So, when they talk about maintenance, that's kind of what I think they were trying to get at in the covenants is, you're going to mow this, you're going to maintain it so it looks decent so that, you know, for the benefit of all the other property owners. Whereas, the easement was done to reserve the rights, and we have just a standard easement document, and I'm sure that the easement document is, is just basically the standard. And since it was a drainage easement, that's what they used.
All right. Thank you, Joel. I yield.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let's start with what Joel just said. And Kyle, can I ask you a question? I believe that you showed earlier in the original plating agreement, wasn't there a stipulation on that plat as far as what the
Yes, absolutely.
developer needed to do and the homeowners in the future needed to do with that drainage easement?
Yep, absolutely. And, and the discussion and the stipulations in the staff report specifically tied the easement to the language in the covenants. They were one and the same in so much that the city attorney did review this for the language in the drainage easement and added the recommendation or added the language to what we had proposed as the developer, as a developer's agent, to include the removal of silt and the accumulation of, I forget exactly what the words were, but, but those, those were intentionally added in to address this easement and the maintenance of it.
I think when I looked at it, it said sediment and, and what it, silt and sediment is what I think it said. But, thank you. I appreciate that for clearing that up. I wanted to go back to this survey real quick. I'm a Realtor by trade, and this survey is just a, it's a location survey. All it does is show where your house sits on the property. It doesn't really have anything to do with easements. They, it's just standard. They put in an easement. Now, if you had a boundary survey, yes, it would show all of your easements. But in your title work, it should have been in your title work that there was a twenty-foot easement in there. And unfortunately, I haven't seen any of your title work on your homes, but it should be in there. Unfortunately, that should have been caught by your Realtor. That's why, next time you want to sell a house, come talk to me. Just kidding. So, anyway, you know, issues like this do happen, but I just wanted to clarify that, you know, that's just, just a standard location survey. That basically all it shows is where your house is on the lot. So, hopefully, we can get this taken care of tonight. I do support this easement being a little bit smaller, and I will tell you, there's a few reasons. One is just because this is a closed drainage area. You don't have drainage coming off the streets. You don't have drainage. The only drainage coming off this is off of your backyards. Also, I highly trust your engineer, and I trust that he did all the flow rates on this, and this isn't going to become an issue into the future. And also, because I don't see why the city really needs twenty feet to get in there when the city isn't required to take care of it. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor. So, for me, the, the question at the heart of this is, does the engineering data support the reduction? And I'm not an engineer, nor do I play one on public access television, but I do appreciate that you did go and get the engineering work to find the answer to that question. Is, will we be able to support a hundred-year flood through this easement at ten feet? And since we have a certified engineer that says yes, it answers the heart of my question, and I do plan to support this tonight. It's a tough decision. I do appreciate the city staff for watching out and making sure we do our due diligence and, and be very cautious about this. I think we have excellent professionals that work in the city. However, we asked very important questions. You all did all of your homework and then some, very, very engaged neighborhood. It's actually very, it's very cool to see because the city is nothing but a community of neighborhoods, and you've come together. And sometimes it takes a common cause to rally you together. And I hope beyond this issue that you stay together and look out for each other. That's what neighborhoods do. But that's beside the point. Just wanted to say, I will support this because you answered my one big question, and I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe too that I will support the five-foot on each side instead of ten-foot. But I do have a question for Carissa. Please, if you could go to the podium. Hi, Carissa.
Hey.
So, for some folks, this is still going to mean they will move their fences. Is that correct?
Correct. We will move our fences. And we talked about this as a neighborhood, five feet to meet those needs. And it will come at a financial cost, but it will at least salvage some of our backyards so we can continue to use it. And I think one of our biggest concerns was the safety of our kids, the safety of our animals, all of those things. And if we can at least allow for them to have some space, we are willing to make that compromise.
Mm-hmm. And I went out and looked at the situation. You guys built some pretty, pretty sturdy fences out there.
There's four feet of concrete in the posts of our fences.
An easy move, that's for sure. It's just something that's bothering me just a little bit. And I don't know if you were the person that said this, but, you know, in the covenants that, you know, you can't be expected to read them, or they were eighteen or nineteen pages, and, and that's where some of this, I don't know, misinformation got started, that you could just build into the easement. Is that, am I remembering, did you say that or?
I, yeah, no, I didn't say it, and I don't.
I'm not trying to be accusatory. I'm just saying that I, I
If I did, I definitely didn't mean it that way. I, I think we did intentionally, I mean, we read through our paperwork. We thought we were doing, and when you pay, you know, to have these surveys done, I guess we just, you, you just go into it assuming that these are correct. And I know that we've, I've pulled up different surveys that are the same plot surveys that do show major drainage easements. I mean, it's not foreign to the world to just automatically put in an eight-foot easement. It is on plots, even within, the new plots on Vine Cliff even have the major drainage easement in them. It, it's not like it's something that they automatically run to as the eight-foot easement. So, I think, I mean, you just trust, and you trust the people who are, who are calling. We, we called our builders. We called our realtors and all these people that we asked. And I, and I know that that doesn't mean anything legal-wise for you guys, but we did believe that we were doing the right thing.
Okay, you've answered my question. Thank you. You know, like I said before, I really do think I'm going to be able to support this. It's not going to be at, I don't know, it's still going to be a lot of work for you guys and a lot of expense, but you will salvage some of your backyards. And I just wish the city would pay as much attention in all of our drainage areas as we have to this issue. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for the willingness of this neighborhood to come together.
Let's hear from Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of procedural questions that I guess I would like to ask the council. These applications for the vacation of easement were taken, and they were incomplete applications, which means there was not a registered licensed surveyor that submitted a document that would actually show the limits and extents of what was proposed to be vacated. I'm assuming that the motion maker is telling the, the people that they'll have to hire that registered land surveyor to prepare the appropriate vacation documents to be recorded.
We'll go to Jerry Wright for a minute.
I assume that's a question directly mean, yes, they'll have to take care of that. That's your expense, true.
I'm just stating that that's a procedural issue that was not addressed with the original submittals with these three items. So, that will have to be addressed before the vacation can legally take effect.
Was that addressed to them when they applied, or was that not?
Yes, it was identified at the time they applied.
Just to clarify, if this motion passes, there will be additional expenses incurred by the homeowners in cleaning up some of the legal issues. Now, let's go back to Jerry Wright.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so everyone absolutely understands, we're not vacating the easement. We're reducing it from twenty to ten. Thank you.
Okay, and back to Lisa Modric for a minute.
Thank you. I'll try to talk fast. I would hope that the city council votes with a recommendation that is truly a compromise by, by the staff as well as by the citizens of which we work for. And as far as that documentation goes, I was with the homeowners when they actually brought the documents in, and it took three staff members to go over the I's and T's and said that, that those documents were approved as they were and was going to move forward. So, this is, I think, the first we might be hearing of cleanup, but I think that the neighborhood would be happy to clean up. They've done everything that they've been asked to this date, and I'm sure that they'll do whatever they need to do. It's just time for us to vote and let this neighborhood move forward and enjoy their homes without any more stress. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can, I'd like to ask the city attorney a question, please.
Yes.
Joel, because if this is approved, the city's interjecting themselves into this particular issue, what kind of liability does that create for us by reducing this, I mean, for future, not these homeowners, obviously. It sounds like we have a bunch of very motivated homeowners, obviously. They're organized, and they're doing a great job, but future homeowners, and it's not being taken care of per se. And somehow, it comes back that the city is the one that agreed to reduce that from twenty to ten feet. Where is our liability in such a situation if there's major home damage? Where is our liability in such a situation if there's major home damage to, say, a 500-year flood, or that type of thing?
You know, it's hard to speculate. I would think, and we provide an opinion, that there is potential for a liability. I mean, if 15 years from now, something happens, there's a 500-year flood, and like you said, there's a lot of damage, then yeah, I would imagine that the current homeowners that maybe aren't sitting in the audience today will come back and say to the city, well, why did you do that? You knew it wasn't big enough to handle a 500-year flood, or you created this problem, so you should pay for it. I think we would have legal defenses, but there could potentially be liability there. You know, I think Alderman Doyle already pointed it out, that we've given you some recommendations or some advice. You know, it is conservative advice, which is if in the future something were to happen, there is a potential there. But that, that is the conservative way to make sure that you don't have liability. You have to, I think, obviously weigh the potential for that to occur with what you think the right thing to do is, and make a decision. So, but there will be some risk with that decision, potentially.
Very good. Thank you. I yield.
Jeri Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for Kyle Trelor, if I may.
Okay.
And as he's walking up there, the question that I have seen posed and have not seen the answer to is, does, do your calculations, does your model account for freeboard?
The flow rate that's developed inside that model is for the 100-year flow specifically, the normal depth.
And then a question for Dale Teck, if I may.
Yes.
If this is granted, and we're constricting that flow, and let's assume that, you know, the fences are built to that line, and we are in effect allowing a more channelized flow for a major event, what's going to happen to those properties at the lower downstream end of this development?
There's always a potential for a storm to occur that will exceed the capacity of a 10-foot wide channel. I would anticipate any encroachment such as a fence, or a tree, or landscaping that is right up against that 10-foot line would negatively affect the flow, and thereby pushing it onto an adjoining property or pooling up on another. So potentially, there could be some effects to some adjoining properties based on whatever type of encroachment is right up on the easement line.
And the reason I ask this is because I've seen this happen, and I know that you are bringing this forward with the best of intentions. I've seen this devastate property owners, and I just, I have to hedge against the unintended consequences. So even though it looks like it's going to pass, I would love to be able to support it, but I've just, I've seen this create problems for neighbors, and I just can't. Thank you.
Jerry Wright.
For the record, I am a retired professional engineer, and I can't practice because I've retired my license, but that's the reason we asked for an evaluation by a licensed engineer, and that's signed and certified right here. So the evaluation is done by someone licensed by the state of South Dakota to do such evaluation, and he's put his signature and seal on it. So I consider that good. And the liability, the upstream liability, it's always liability, is somewhat on his, but at least we're doing it based on science and engineering and not opinion. So I have great confidence in this, and we are not making the decision, I'm not making the decision based on my opinion. I'm making the decision based on the recommendation of a licensed engineer practicing in the state of South Dakota. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you. You know, I really like to think that I want to try to help people out, and I fully get where you're at on this thing, but taking this down to a 10-foot easement, the easement is still granted for the benefit of the city of Rapid City. In your covenants, if you have somebody that is plugging it up or doing something, none of you have the right to enter that other person's property to resolve the issue by covenants. And the reason we have a 20-foot easement is not based upon the flow of the water, but based upon getting a piece of equipment in there. And I get it. So you don't think this project will need 20-foot to get a backhoe and a cat in, or a dump truck? You believe that, you may be right. But now, going forward, are we, is it just based upon us going out, standing on a corner, putting our hands in our pockets, saying, yeah, 10-foot work here, 20-foot work here? What is the basis of us making this decision? Because we're, you know, now we've, we've got 20-foot easements all over the place so that we can go in and service them in the future with equipment that might not be required here. And I understand we're trying to please people in the short term, but long term, there could be an issue. So what is the basis now going forward for our public works as to when we're just going to give this up? And we're not going to worry about taking equipment and having a 20-foot easement and being able to get equipment in to clean up the mess? I mean, we just started a drainage utility, just fixing that stuff up. So, I mean, that's all I'm asking, because you've opened, you really opened up a box here of designing the easement based upon flow and not the ability to service it later on down the road. And that's my concern.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Call the question, please.
Okay, there are no more lights, so we can just vote. Motion on the table is to change the easement from 20 feet to 10 feet. We'll go to a roll call on this issue.
Doyle? Estes? Laurenti?
No.
Wright? Modric?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
We have a motion favored five to three.
Okay, motion passes. Now, a little word of, word of advice for you. I was a, I was a young, starry-eyed homeowner, and I bought a home in a neighborhood that did not have a drainage easement, and all of our fences were backed up to each other just like yours are. And it was not a problem until one neighbor downstream from me brought in a truckload of dirt because he didn't like the angle of his yard. And that's all it took. That caused me to deal with water problems for the better part of 25 years. Ultimately, after that home changed hands twice, I was able to get permission from the two landowners between me and, this is all in our backyards, between me and the next street, to dig a trench down the property line and put in underwater drainage to suck the pool of water out of my backyard out towards the street where it belonged. All because there was no drainage easement, city did not have any business in there fixing it, and I had to rely on the neighbors. So I think there's been some confusion over this whole issue, and I'm only talking to you as an experienced homeowner who's lived in my home for 26 years, and it's been pool-free for two of those years now. The problem is not you, and none of you in this room will go out and build a garden above ground on the property line, or plant a bunch of bushes, or trees, or designer shrubs, or any of those things. None of you will do that. But some of you won't be living in that house in five, or 10, or 15 years, and when you get some redneck in the neighborhood who wants to put something in the backyard, this will, this easement was to protect you and to protect the city. So we have the 10-foot easement, and what's different about your neighborhood now and my neighborhood is, the city can now drive a truck up that 10-foot easement and take out any future fences, or gardens, or shrubs, or anything like that in order to achieve drainage. So that's, that's a better deal. But I'm telling you to keep an eye out on your neighbors to make sure that they don't naturally encroach on that area. You spend a lot of money for that little piece of property, and development these days, the lots are very small, and so people want to branch out. And so anyway, your 10-foot easement passed, and you can all go home and celebrate, and thank you for being here.
You just have one question real quick. Is there a time allowance then for us to move our fences up five feet? I mean, they gave us 30 days the last time, which obviously...
The question is, is there a time, is there a time?
Is there a timeframe that we have to move our fences up those five feet? Just because the last time it was 30 days, we literally got an email, or a letter, and said, or maybe 45 days, was it? Forty, 45 days? I can't remember exactly, but it was, and we're in January, so 45 days.
We'll work with you on it. We'll send you some notification and tell you, we'll figure out a reasonable time to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is going to, it's going to open up these kind of requests all over town. Okay, we are done with item number 39. Oh, hold on. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm all mixed up. I got too much going on in my... Yeah, that was 30, 30 through 32. Okay, and so now we are up to item number 39, and we'll open the public comment on that item. We have one speaker request from Brian Vulcan.
Good evening. Am I limited to three minutes, Mayor? To talk fast? My name is Brian Vulcan, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come and speak tonight, and for furthering the discussion on the parking lot at the corner of Fifth and St. Joe. I know that you're going to be discussing that tonight. I don't know to what extent, but I wanted to make a couple of comments to maybe give you some food for thought. I come to you tonight not only as a resident of Rapid City, but a downtown business and property owner, and a supporter of some development on that site. I think it's a site that needs to be developed for the benefit of all of Rapid City, not just downtown, and certainly not just for the benefit of some developer out there that may or may not do it, but for all of Rapid City. It's a valuable piece of property, and I know the city needs to make sure that you do the best possible, or make the best possible decision for the best possible outcome. And I want to suggest maybe a way forward. I also want to caution you, do not let the missteps of the past stop you from making the right decision on how to move forward on, on that property. I encourage you to consider option number four that was included in the city attorney's recommendation. I think the mayor also recommended that option. I really believe that's the best one, and that's to go out with an RFP to developers to come in with ideas on how to move forward on that, on that site. And having extensive experience and spending a lot more of my own money than I ever want, could have imagined, on, on the development of something on that site, I think I have a little bit of insight that I want to share with you. The issue, the critical issue has always been parking. To make that development work in a community this size with our economics, the only way that it can really work is if we provide some sort of parking, i.e. parking ramp. And I know that you've already allocated, at the time, it was $2.8 million. I think you're down to $2 million left now of vision funds for that. The parking just does not pencil out for a developer to have to build that. And in the past, every proposal that has come forward, it's been, it's come forward with a little bit of money, 2.8 million, and it sounds like a lot, but it's really not, a little bit of money from the city, and then the rest was put on the developer to come up in some way to be able to magically build 350, 500, 700 parking spots. I would like to suggest that if you really want to move forward, that the city build the parking ramp and use city funds to do it. You have options. You can bond for it. I would suggest that you use vision funds. It's the perfect use for vision funds, and not just the $2 million that you've allocated so far, but probably the $10 million it's going to take to build that parking ramp. And if you want to put it in perspective, you already have $2 million. You only have to use eight months' worth of the half-cent tax revenue to completely pay for that tax ramp, that parking ramp. And the value that it'll give the city is tremendous. If you provide parking and then offer a developer a long-term lease, i.e. 99 years or something like that, to develop a property, you will get a very attractive project brought forth by some developer. I would suggest the city should partner with the developer in the construction of that, whether you put their development on top of a parking ramp, under a parking ramp, next to the parking ramp. Let the developer come to you with suggestions, where in the past, it was always, hey, developer, you have to pay for most of that parking ramp. It's just not going to work. You should offer and mandate that the park, that the developer lease a certain number of parking spots. You get some tax revenue off of it, and I don't think that's going to be a problem because that's what the developer wants. He wants to park. He's not afraid to pay for parking. He just can't pay for a $10 million parking spot, or parking ramp. Any RFP that should go forward, first of all, should be built on lessons learned by other communities. Go out to other communities, see what they did. There's lots of them that have done something like this. Don't try and take it on ourselves, and we've stumbled so many times over the last 10 years on trying to put this forward. So let's go to where, whatever community. I know Sioux Falls has done it, other Omaha, a lot of other different communities have done something like this. Let's take their model and make it work for us. But put a set of conditions in there. Tell the developer what we want. If it's a, personally, I think we need a hotel, we need retail, maybe some office space, possibly housing, but we need to put in there that they have to make a minimum investment. Because that minimum investment is going to offer the magnitude that we need for that project to go forward. But if we offer to build the parking, merely make it attractive to the developer, the developer will bring us back something very attractive in itself. This is an important project for downtown. It's an important project for the entire city. I encourage you to move forward and do something, and not, let's not sit on your heels and say, oh, gosh, it didn't work last time, and the last developer did that, and the developer before him did this. Just, let's just move forward and do something. But we're going to have to open up our park, our wallets and get it done, and it's going to have to come from the city. And I really believe the way to do it is use some of those vision funds. I don't know what's in the vision fund right now, but I'm sure it's a lot. We're racking up over $12 million a year in there, and we haven't had any new projects for a long time. So there's something there. With that, I'm, the mayor's shaking his head. He says, your red light's on. And if anybody wants to talk the economics of this project, I have many, many spreadsheets and a lot of experience that we can talk some more. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, that'll close the public comment period. Item number 39 is discussion of options for parking lot, the parking lot located on the corner of Fifth and St. Joseph Street, formerly known as the President's Plaza building site. The reason I put this on the agenda, I don't think it's reasonable for us to hash out the options tonight and vote on one and move forward tomorrow. I think we need to be careful about this. I think, if anything, I would like a little general guidance from the council on if you wanted to put together a working... uh, if you wanted to put together a working group or have a, um, uh, create some type of a process or how you feel generally, but, uh, I don't believe it's realistic for us to resolve this tonight. So having said that, we'll go to Jerry Wright.
I totally agree, Mayor, and I suggest that we meet as a council on January twenty-third, if that's possible, because I believe that's an open night, and that'd be the agenda item that we discuss is our options and recommendations for this project to move forward. And I think that it's imperative we do that, and we set a fairly quick schedule, because if we want to get something done in the next two or three years, we need to start now in order to start construction. I'd say a year from now, so we can have it occupied within two years, three years, excuse me, three years. So I think we should meet as a group, as a council, special meeting Jan- January twenty-third, and discuss the options in full then. Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, I think maybe for Joel Landin, if I may. Joel, what, Rich, the last, uh, proposal we had on here had us building a parking structure to go in addition to some sort of tower. Is it possible to parcel out this portion where we build a, a parking structure and then sell the other portion so that we don't have to get in the middle of the development?
Yes, I mean, you could replat the property, build, decide, design and build a ramp, and then replat the ramp onto a separate lot and then sell the remaining parcel.
And I'm not sure, we must have had some sort of plan in place to, to put that parking structure on there that we were going to do. And I, I appreciate it, Mr. Vulcan's, uh, advice, I think it's really good. I am concerned with option four, just because we don't have a history of doing it well. And even if this group was okay with that, in six months, we're going to have an election, and that next group may not be great with it. I don't know what we're going to have for elected officials, and from what I understand, I mean, this, this lot's been empty for years and years, forty years. What makes us think that we're finally magically going to be able to pull this off with some sort of, uh, private partner, partner, private-public partnership, which I'm, which I'm fine with in some cases, but I'm not sold on this one. This property is prime real estate in a hard corner, uh, of downtown. I think it's a developer's dream, I don't think we need a lot of incentives to develop it, because if you have a parking structure there, and that kind of location, and the vibrancy going on downtown, and a downtown master plan to guide our development, I think it should sell itself, and, uh, we could use the proceeds from that portion of the land to pour back into the parking structure in addition to other funding sources we may find. I'm in agreement, we need a parking structure there. We need parking, not just there, but several places downtown. It's, it's kind of ridiculous, we invest so much in our downtown, and we don't invest in places for people to park, and yes, there's a perception that the parking garage is a long ways away, but we can help change that culture over time, if we have parking structures throughout. So, right now, I'm not sold on option four. I like some sort of hybrid of option three, where we build the parking structure, sell the other part off, with conditions, with zoning and planning that we have in place for a reason. I'm assuming we can choose who we sell to with highest bidder, best value for Rapid City, design criteria, make sure it fits with the culture of downtown. All those things that we want can still be accomplished, selling it through the free market versus the government trying to get involved in all of this. Um, I've been chewing on this for a while, and I'm just not convinced that, um, we could do it well. Maybe I'm wrong, I am new, I'm just kind of coming at this from the outside, maybe you all have some wisdom to share with me. Um, so I'll wrap it up right now, and I'll use the rest of my time if I need to share later. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I sure think that having a special meeting, uh, would serve this project well. You know, if I learned anything, uh, over the la, on the last deal was, was the, the, the way that, the last project, the city was putting money in, in towards the parking structure and such, but, but the projects melded over each other, the part of the, their private money went over the parking structure, and, and it was hard for our, the taxpayers of this town to see where the tax money stopped and where the private money started, and I think there was just a, you know, um, just, I don't think the people of Rapid were quite ready for that. Um, I, I want to, I'm, I'm all ears to listen to any, any RFP-type proposal, but I, but I just think that we are, as a city, are going to have to look at being involved in the parking. I mean, if you, if you split that lot, and, and, and we dedicated the east half to parking, and, and then put the west half out for an RFP with some stipulations of, you know, certain things that had to be built, and, and the people that would buy the west half would have a proprietary lease for their needs, parking needs in the parking structure. Um, but I think it needs to be split out, and I, and I think it needs to be that way in part, because if you ever need to be able to add on to the parking structure, uh, which would be costly, but, but then you have that ability where you're not mixing uses and occupancies and things like that. I mean, that's just a general thing that I think of, about, when I think about that, and I just, I, uh, I think that one of the things that makes it hard for a developer, if a developer was coming in and just building their structure and, and building parking to meet the needs of their structure is one thing, but what you have to realize is, and I'm sure you all do, and not implying that you don't, is that once, the minute you start development, you end up with a minus one-hundred-and-thirty spots. You lose them. So you're in the hole, one-hundred-and-thirty spots before you ever start. So somebody's got, you know, and to, and to tell a developer, well, suck that up in your project, that just doesn't, I don't think that's going to fly. So, um, uh, I, I, I think, I think we need to be in, involved in the, in the parking. Um, and of course, I don't think we want a parking structure unless there's a commitment by somebody to build a facility, and, and somebody's not going to build the facility unless we make a commitment to build the parking structure. So we have a lot of decisions to make, and, and, uh, I thi, I think we need a meeting to hash it out, and, uh, I think talking to other people that have done this. You look at Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls has done this, but, but, but when Sioux Falls has a thirty, forty, fifty-million-dollar project, they've probably got six or seven people that can come to the table, and there's, there's some, there's some competition. We don't quite have that. We, we've got people, yeah, that can, they do it, but they might not choose to do that kind of risked projects with their money. So, you know, it, there's just a, there's fewer people in Rapid that can, that are willing, that are in that business, uh, tying it on to that size of a project. So that's probably one of the reasons why it worked in, in my mind, in Sioux Falls, they're doing a project, I believe, right now, where it's public-private partnership, and, but there were, you know, um, there were prob, there were multiple people, I believe, after the project, which, which meets the test a little bit better to the public. So, uh, I'm all in favor of meeting on the twenty-third.
Okay, I, just my two cents, I think that we could, uh, make this more productive, especially if we're looking at a meeting in the next month or so. If along the lines of this discussion, if you could come up with some ideas of what staff could investigate for you prior to a special council meeting, so that we're, don't use that council meeting as simply a brainstorming session, uh, I think that would be good. Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, along those lines, I think some of the things that we need to look at is how we are going to actually finance this. Um, I appreciate Mr. Vulcan's comments on this, and I think, uh, from what I've heard from other council members, this project to work and to go forward definitely is going to have to have the city build the parking structure, and we should anyway, it's going to be our parking structure. Now, once we separate the property, and that's another thing we're going to have to look at, what is the footprint of our building going to be? Because it may not be half the lot, it may be two-thirds of the lot, it may be, you know, um, so we'll have to know that before we actually split and plat the lot, but also there'll have to be that commitment that we're going forward with this parking structure before a private developer is going to come in and make a commitment on building a building on that property. And another thing that I would warn the council about is putting stipulations on it. I mean, we could over-stipulate this where somebody doesn't want to come in and build on the property. So, you know, when the developers come in, when they do their market study, that's going to tell them whether they're going to build housing on it, whether they're going to build a motel on it, whether they're, you know, whatever the market is going to dictate at that time, and I think anybody that's, that's been close to President's Plaza in the last ten years and seen all the different market studies that have came in, you know, things change in Rapid City, things change every four, five, six years, sometimes every couple of years, depending on what's being built at the time, what the need is at the time. So I just want to caution this council to not over-dictate what our developers are going to do, because if we're going to split that property, we're going to be in charge of the parking structure and own the parking structure, the developers should be able to purchase that property and build what they can build under current zoning regulations on that property. So, anyway, thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and I make a motion to continue this item to January twenty-third, six-thirty P.M.
Okay, the motion for a special council meeting on January twenty-third by Laurenti, seconded by Roberts. We'll go to Pauline Sumption, who has an opinion.
No opinion, just a statement, the school board is scheduled that night in this room.
Meet somewhere else.
Pauline Sumption says, take that.
We'll meet upstairs, or community room, we'll meet in the community room, can't wait.
Okay, we'll count on it, we'll, we'll count on it, for as far as this motion goes, we'll count on the twenty-third having some space available, and we'll proceed as if that's workable. Now we'll go to Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor, just one last comment, I guess, here. Um, it, it looks like from what I'm reading on the council here that, uh, the proposals one, two, and three are kind of off the table, we're generally looking at four and five, and for staff recommendations or a hybrid thereof. So, um, I, when I think you're talking to staff, we're looking at four and five. I'm looking at five.
Okay, let's hear from Jason Solomon again.
Thank you, just for staff recommendations, I, I think three is kind of on the table as well, uh, but maybe that we have some information on the parking structure we were considering building before, maybe getting that to us to review ahead of time, what that parcel might look like, is it even, um, an option for us, uh, tho, those sorts of things. And I would also just, just while I have a minute, we already have the need for parking before we put anything up there. So without the, whatever structure ends up going there, we already have the need for parking, it's already there for today, without anything there. So then you add in that we have something there, then we need it, parking, uh, to grow with, and that's, so I, I liked Alderman Estes' thoughts of having something that we can build upon for future use, um, as our needs grow, but I would say right now we already have a dire need for parking downtown, uh, and it will only grow with this development, which is exciting, and, uh, we want that, um, but I, I would say that, uh, just if staff could, could look at those options, uh, for us for the parking garage and parcel out. Well, I think it's all on the, I haven't heard everybody's opinion, so it's, uh, all on the table, but with that, I will yield, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, back to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quickly, could I ask Pauline Sumption a question?
Yep.
Pauline, would you have, be able to, at that meeting, I'm sure you could have the payoff on our existing parking bonds, but then is there a way for you, if, if our existing bonds were paid off, is based upon the, then the revenue available, how much we could bond for? Would you have a ballpark estimate for us?
I could probably figure something out, or I could ask our, our bond counsel that we typically use, our underwriters, they can work up the numbers for me. But typically going into that, they're going to look at the fact that we're going to lose our revenue off the one-hundred-and-thirty spots.
Right.
And we don't know for sure how many spots we're going to have back. It depends on the design of the structure, so it's going to be a little bit of a shot in the dark until we have more specific type information as far as where, where we're going to end up with the, the ramp, if we put, do a parking ramp, um, as far as the number of spots, how many are covered, how many are uncovered, what the council is comfortable in charging.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr., Mr., thank you, Pauline. Mr. Mayor, I think that's one, going to be one of the interesting conversations you have, is, is when you figure out, when you figure out whatever the project is and whatever, whatever we think the parking needs are going to be for that project, and then, and, and based upon what calculations, I mean, we're looking at the new downtown plan, and that kind of relieves some of the parking, and, and then you look at it, you start with a negative, um, you know, there was, could, arguable, but, but some of the plans, I, I mean, I felt like, I felt like at the end of the project, we're going to have less available parking than we did when we started. So we, that's going to be an interest, I think that's a topic we all need to be prepared to talk about also, is, is that, you know, um, based upon what, what are the calculations that the new building, uh, the parking needs are going to be for that, and then are, are we going to add in the stuff we're losing, are, are we going to try to accommodate the, the parking leases that we have in place for the existing downtown? So, um, I think we've got a lot to discuss, thank you.
Okay, Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to chime in and say that I had hoped after I made the motion to continue, we would just move on so that we could discuss it on January twenty-third. So I'm going to reserve all of my comments for that time period, because if anybody listens to Legal and Finance, they know which route I'm going, and Mr. Suliman is, uh, down my alley as well, so three is definitely on the, on the agenda.
Okay, sorry about that, I should have paid attention. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a motion to, uh, schedule a, uh, special meeting on the twenty-third to discuss this, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, just so that you do know, um, I get, uh, contacted from some developer on this project, perhaps is, on average, once per week. I know that there's at least one developer watching this meeting tonight, uh, interested. The developers that I've been contacted from are from, uh, three different states so far. Uh, there's great interest here, and I think, uh, I recommend it for, because I think there's a lot of leeway in there, only to the extent that, uh, the city would have some responsibility to ensure that whatever is developed is consistent with the downtown plan and the downtown needs. I think if we took our eye off the ball and sold it and left it up to whoever, we could end up with the, uh, with the queen mothership of all, uh, undesirable businesses of, uh, I was going to say what one of them was, but, uh, anyway, we should just, uh, protect, protect Rapid City's interests. Okay, so that concludes item number thirty-nine. Now onto public hearing items, items forty through forty-four, we have no speaker requests on those items, so the consent, uh, public hearing items forty through forty-four, anyone want to remove any of those? If not, can we have a motion? Motion to approve by Laurenti, seconded by Modrick, for items forty through forty-four, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number forty-five is the bill list, and we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is attached at seven million, two-hundred-nineteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Okay, motion to approve by Laurenti, seconded by Solomon, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Anyone have a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second to adjourn, Laurenti and Roberts, all in favor, say aye. We're adjourned.